Tonight, on the county council meeting, June the sixth, twenty twenty-three, at six P M. First, on the order called the Reverend invocation by Reverend Willie Patton, Republican Grove Baptist Church, Edgefield, South Carolina, after the invocation placed allegiance to the flag. Let us stand at this time as we come forward.
Let us bow and pray out. O Lord, our Lord, again, how excellent is thy name in all the earth. For you've set your glory above the heavens. God, we thank you for this day. We thank you, Lord, for allowing these your children be ushered again into your divine and in your holy presence. Thank you, God, for the way that you have blessed us down through these many years. God, we must include that we thank you, Lord, for Sister Arlene Traxler. Thank you, Lord, for what you've allowed her to mean to this community down through the years, and not only that, but for right now. God, I pray that the person that come behind her will tear pages out of the book that she left. All of us, Lord, we leave memories into the hearts and minds of some of us. God, we thank you, first of all, for being who you are. Well, that, Lord, we thank you for sending your darling son, Jesus, gave us a right to the tree of life. And God, we're here tonight for reasons that you already know. We pray, God, that you would bless all that we intend to do, every endeavor, every thought, every desire. Bless us individually. Bless us collectively, Lord. Help us to know, Lord, that we have more in common than we do in difference. God, we're your children, and you are our Father. Help us, Lord, to keep our eyes lifted toward the hills from whence come of all of our heath. Lord, we know it comes from you and you, Lord. Continue, Lord, to keep your hand over this council. Help them to know that they can't do nothing without you. And in you include all things are possible, and we can all believe. Blessing our God in your own way. We just have to the words of our mouth and the meditations of our hearts. Be acceptable in your sight. God, you are strength. You are our redeemer. We ask all that we ask in the blessed name of Jesus. Children of God, say it.
Amen. Our prayers to the flag of the United States of America, and to the people for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. At this time, before I receive approval of the agenda, I noticed that we have some items that we need to move up. And there's two of them, the resolution for Mrs. Traxler and Mr. Reo. Can I get a motion to move it this up?
Are we gonna move it to, um?
Yeah, we're gonna move it. It's gonna come on the, after the minutes, after the minutes, after proof of the minutes. The motion approved and that we moved this up on our agenda. Uh, Jack Keenan made the motion, Jerry Moody, he's second. Dean, all in favor, let me know about ours. I'll put a brace in your hand. Okay, Dean, what is your regards?
I vote yes.
The vote passed unanimously. It voted yes. Next, approve of the agenda.
Yeah, we gotta approve the agenda because we just submitted it.
You, you have changed the agenda. Now you need to approve.
Okay, okay. I need to approve the change of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
So move.
Okay. If a mo- in motion, there'd be, uh, approve the agenda for, uh, by Sister, by Tiffany Ireland and second by Jackie Keenan. All in favor of this motion, let me see it by the sign of your hand. Dean, what is your comment?
I vote yes.
The motion passed unanimously. Go now, we go with the approval of the agenda. Minutes, minutes, go to the general, yeah, minutes. Minutes of May twenty, twenty twenty-three, record, monthless meeting. What I have regards to the minutes. It was motion by Moody, second by Tiffany. Dean, what is your request?
I vote yes.
Vote yes. The motion had been moved and second and voted yes. All in favor of the motion is passed unanimously. Dean has just indicated his yes vote. Okay, now we come with, uh, the resolution. We will do it. Resolution, I'm on, uh, David will be reading the resolution after I, um, read it. We considerate of approval of a resolution two twenty-one, twenty-three, one ninety-six, recognizing Edgefield County Treas Arlene Traxler for her year of dedication and service to the county of Edgefield. We have the resolution read by David at this time.
Thank you. This is a resolution recognizing the accomplishments and works of Arlene Traxler, Treasurer, whereas Edgefield County Council wishes to recognize those persons who have provided distinguished service to Edgefield County, and whereas Arlene Traxler began her service as Edgefield County Treasurer in nineteen ninety-nine, and whereas Arlene's leadership of the Edgefield County Treasurer's Office over a period of twenty-four years of continuous service has been exemplary, and whereas Arlene's service and dedication to the citizens of Edgefield County is widely recognized and greatly appreciated, and whereas Arlene's careful stewardship of the county's finances and meticulous record-keeping instills confidence in the public, and whereas upon her upcoming retirement, Arlene will be greatly missed. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the Edgefield County Council in session duly assembled this sixth day of June, twenty twenty-three, that Arlene Traxler be honored for her dedication and tireless service to the citizens of Edgefield County.
Can I get a motion on this resolution?
So move.
Second.
It had been moved and second that be, uh, the motion to be recognized for Ms. Arlene Traxler and for dedicated service. All in favor, I raise your hand. Motion. Dean, what is your?
I, I proudly vote yes.
The vote passed unanimously. Congratulations, Ms. Arlene, for your outstanding service.
We're gonna do, do pictures after the next resolution.
After, after next. Save a little time, we're gonna do, come, yeah. I forgot to tell you, but anyway. We sorry about that, yes. We gonna get you. We gonna get you family and all. We gonna get to you. Yeah. Oh, next, we have a resolution from, uh, Charles Reel. Let me see, get out, find one of them. Okay. Consideration of approval of a resolution twenty-one, twenty-three, one eleven sixty-two, recognizing Edgefield County Clerk of Court, Register of Deeds, Charles Reel, for his solicitor as Clerk of Court, Register of Deeds for the year for the state of South Carolina. Mr. David, your turn.
Thank you. A resolution recognizing Charles Reel, Clerk of Court, for being selected Clerk of Court, Register of Deeds of the Year, whereas Edgefield County wishes to recognize those persons who have provided distinguished service to Edgefield County, and whereas Charles Reel serves as the Clerk of Court, Register of Deeds for Edgefield County, and whereas Charles service as both the Edgefield County Clerk of Court and the Register of Deeds has been exemplary, and whereas Charles' expertise is widely recognized, such that he is frequently asked to train staff around the state, and whereas Charles was selected by the membership of the South Carolina Association of Clerks of Court and Registers of Deeds for the high honor of being recognized as the Clerk of Court and Register of Deeds for the year twenty twenty-three, and now, therefore, be it resolved by the Edgefield County Council in session duly assembled this sixth day of June, twenty twenty-three, that Charles Reel be honored for his dedication and tireless service to the citizens of Edgefield County.
Can I entertain a motion on this resolution for Charles Reel?
Second.
It had been motion second about Jackie Keenan and Jerry Moody. Come question all, we are prepared to vote. At this time, let me see you by the raising of your hand. Dean, what's your comment?
I again proudly vote yes.
The motion had been passed unanimously. Charles Reel, we like to thank you for your dedicated service throughout Edgefield County and the state of South Carolina. We appreciate that. We proud of you. At this time, we're gonna do a presentation with who, at, and we got. We're gonna do Ms. Arlene Traxler first.
Ms. Arlene, would you step up?
Yes.
All right. Charles Reel, you're up.
Ms. Arlene, the floor is yours.
It's mine. You know, it's not a lot of times I've been lost for words. Uh, Mr. Auditor over there always gets on to me. When I get up to speak, he said, uh-oh, we gonna be here a long time. He's always accused me of that. But anyway, uh, Mr. Chairman, which, and Council, Mr. Cadeau, Ms. Eubanks, everyone, I thank you for, uh, everything tonight. It's especially nice, and I'm very humbled by it. If it wasn't for all y'all and the taxpayers, I wouldn't be here. You entrusted me to, to, uh, with the county's finances, and, uh, I hope I've made you proud in doing it. And, uh, I do thank you. I thank everyone for, uh, your commitment to me, especially my office staff. I don't have, uh, everybody here right now, but the Treasurer-elect is here tonight, and, uh, she'll be my replacement. But anyway, I hope that you will support her, and, uh, I thank you again for everything. It, the flowers are beautiful, and, uh, everything is, and it was quite a spread, and I thank you again. Thank you for everything.
Yes, we thank you.
Do we, anyone in the council member have something to say at this time?
I just wanna say thank you for all of your years of service to the council. It was our honor to honor you tonight, and thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
She's right. Right, he's right in there. Little John, your head. But, uh, John, thank you for that wonderful thing. John did a cook, a barbecue. He told me, he said, tell me this morning, he said, come, huh? And, uh, he started cooking on Sunday. I said, he finished on Monday morning.
Wow.
And he goes, uh, he does everything. I call him for everything. John fix, can he fix my chair? Whatever he is, he's always, he's always there.
Son is your turn.
Um, I wanna thank everybody for this honor. I appreciate it. I've, I've been working pretty hard trying to, um, I guess, let people know about Edgefield County and what we do here and spreading the knowledge and, and things across the state. And, um, my staff couldn't be here tonight because I kinda didn't tell them. I didn't wanna put anybody on the spot or anything, but I wanna thank my staff and former staff members for all the experiences they gave me and all the instructions they gave me and, and helped me to grow in this position and, and, uh, you know, just win the honor of Clerk of Court and Register of Deeds of the Year. And I wanna thank my family for their support on it also, and just thank you for the honor. Appreciate it.
Let's give them a part of applause. At this time, I'd like to back up. I'd like to apologize to our chairman, Camler. He's on the phone. He's right here with us. I should have let you all know that first, but it just overwhelmed what was going on, doing everything, and so we just definitely appreciate that. So we're not gonna kill any more time. If you all would like to leave, that's why we moved it up, because I know Arlene and the rest of y'all had a long day today, so you all can be excused at this time, and thank you all for coming. Have a good afternoon. Okay, we will move forward. Now we down to the comment from the public. Has anyone signed up? Aretha? Okay, we noticed that, um, we have a five-minute period time, and at that five minutes, Aretha will notify you, but she gonna notify us when you get to the fourth, so you have one more minute left. Come to the podium.
I don't plan on using my five minutes, but thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. And, Arlene, I know you still back there. I wanna thank you for all the service that you've done for this county. Uh, I've never heard a complaint about their treasurer's office. They are dedicated, they work hard, and most treasurers in the county won't come out front and, and, and talk to people and, and take the money up, whatever needs to be done. Ms. Arlene always did it. Uh, un- unfortunately, I have to spend a good bit of time in there every year paying taxes, but that's part of it. That's, that's how we get our government. But, uh, two, I wanna remind everybody, may not know, ten or fifteen years ago, Arlene was president of the South Carolina Treasurer's Association, and they have an annual meeting. And they usually go to Greenville, Columbia, Hilton Head, or somewhere like that. She made them come to Edgefield, and she showcased Edgefield County for three or four days, and, and that, that's, that's not normal. Uh, and she stepped up, and she did that, and, uh, I remember it well. So thank you, Arlene, for your dedication to the people of this county. Thank you, thank you very much. But, um, I, I did have a couple of questions, uh, regarding, uh, item seven on the agenda, which is the, uh, six-month extension for the Duban Guru Group, uh, reg- regarding the, um, uh, tax abatements for the, for the old mill. And the, the agenda says that there's, uh, all evidence indicate this project is moving forward, and I was just curious, in, in the past year, uh, what, what has been done, uh, regarding that project? Uh, if, if anybody knows, could, could tell me. I appreciate it.
The engineering studies have been done, and they are currently shopping for a contractor per the mayor of the town and the administrator of the town of Edgefield. This is moving forward rapidly, and I take them at their word for that.
Okay. You, you hadn't talked to the Guru people?
I have corresponded by email with them where they have shared their status, yes.
Ha- has the, um, project, uh, plans or scope changed any? I know there was a hundred and twenty-something apartments, I believe, planned, and, uh, is, has any of that changed that, that we know of in, in the year's time?
Uh, no, they're still using the same plan. There are some engineering shortfalls that have to be accounted for, so they could lose one or two. Um, but no, they're still, they still on the same plan. Um, their engineering is almost to the review stage. But they're, they, they're still stick, sticking with the same site plan.
Okay, okay. And, and my final question, uh, this says that there, uh, have asked for the six-month extension. Is there provision for further extensions, uh, if they ask for them?
Um, so, Councilman Talbert, I, I failed to ask you if you want me to respond to questions.
Go ahead and respond.
So, right now, there's not that contract allowed for a six-month extension?
One extension was in the contract.
It did, it did, yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate the information.
Anyone else, Aretha?
That was it, sir.
That was it? Okay, we will close the comment period from the public. We will go down to repose. If there's anyone, council member have a concern about anything in the minutes of, in the repose. If not, hearing nothing. If not, we go to the public, public hearing on order one twenty-three, twenty-one, twenty-three, seven ninety-six, an order to prepare for the fiscal year general operation budget. Is anyone here to speak on that order? Okay, silent give consent. We moving on down to old business. Okay, consideration of approval of a third reading of order twenty-one, twenty-three, seven ninety-eight to amend section twenty-four, twenty, twenty-four, two eighty-six of the Edgefield County Code of Order Land Development in regards to the term, the county council term, county council commission term, excuse me. You have the plan of commission. Have anybody, uh, have anything changed, uh?
Nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed. What do I have regarding of the third reading of this audit?
I make a motion that we pass this order.
The motion had motioned and seconded by Tiffany and Jerry Moody. All in favor, let it know it by the sign of your hand. Dean, your comment?
I vote yes.
The, the motion vote yes for Dean, so the motion have been passed unanimously. Considerate of approval of the third reading of order twenty-one, twenty-three, seven ninety-seven to enter into a Muckville County industrial park agreement with Aiken County to the Gateway Property, L P, properly identified as Project Growth. Administrator, is anything different?
There's nothing, Dad. There's been no changes.
No changes. Okay, any comment from the council member? If not, what do I have regards of this motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve it.
Okay. Tiffany make a motion and seconded by Jackie that we approve it. Dean, what is your response?
I vote yes.
The motion has passed unanimously. Dean voted yes. Oh, oh, okay. I didn't vote. Okay, well, I vote. The motion passed unanimously.
We all have to vote. You have to ask for all of us.
All in favor, the motion passed unanimously.
There we go.
Okay, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Considerate of approval of the third reading of order twenty-one, twenty-three, seven ninety-six, an order provided for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, general operation budget of al- allegation Alex Cell budget for E nine one one, administration, economic development, solid wage disposal, victim bill of rights, immersion medical service, road maintenance, tri-counter solicitor, assisted solicitor, school rescue office one through school rescue office eight, events, security, shared districtary funds, clerk of court districtary fund, pre-tri events, and commes- commistered violence, criminal domestic violence. Have anything changed in the budget, uh? Can you walk us through it?
Uh, yes, Councilman Talbert, um, the changes from the second reading primarily include an increase in anticipated revenue to the general fund in the amount of two hundred thirty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. And this is primarily due to the fact that the state legislature, um, is fully funding the aid to subdivisions. So Representative Hickson's here. Thank you for that. Um, that brings more money into our budget. That allowed us to have a reduction in the anticipated use of the fund balance of eighty-four thousand dollars. And then we did have, um, we are certain we will have an increase expenditure for health insurance and the retirement contribution on the county's behalf. So that two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars will fund those two increases, and it will also allow us to reduce use of the fund balance, which is a good thing. There are no changes at all in the special revenue fund budgets covered in the ordinance. The general fund budget is fourteen million, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars. Uh, that is the increase of two thirty-four. We did receive, um, finally, the opioid grant totaling one hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Um, council proactively added this in special revenue funds, I think at second reading, um, which was a good move, because we did receive the funds, and yet we've already got that budget established, so there will not need to be any changes. So there will not need to be any changes there. These funds will pay for overdose treatment drugs, pay for school, church, and community education and outreach efforts utilizing county staff, and it will fund a part-time employee who will be housed in EMS that is is primarily an administrative person that will help administer the training, the scheduling, the grant expenditures, and so forth, not an EMT. That person will oversee the program, that's all.
Any comment from council members?
I'd like to thank David again for putting this budget together, and I think it shows that we care about our employees and also the citizens because we've worked with Garrett from EMS and Sheriff Roland and gave them what they needed to protect the citizens. And so I just want to thank y'all and thank y'all too back there.
Thank you.
And one else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve.
Okay. Dean Camma made the motion.
Are you making the motion? Dean?
Yes, I made the motion to approve.
Dean Camma made the motion to approve, and it was second by Jerry. All in favor, by raising your hand. Okay, so Dean, your. Your motion?
I vote yes.
You both voted yes. The motion passed unanimously of third reading, so we appreciate you all on that. Are we now down to new business? Consideration of of appointment to the zoning board of a pier, Sherri Champion. I hope I'm pronouncing his name right. I did, okay. All in favor of Sherri be appointed to this board, can I get a motion? It had been moved in second that Sherri be pumped to the board of pier. All in favor, by raising your hand. Dean, your preference?
I vote yes.
The motion passed unanimously to the appointment of Sherri Champion. Consideration of approval of a resolution twenty-one, twenty-three, eleven sixty-three, providing for a and into government agreement between Esri and McCormick County, align McCormick County solicitor use County Highway three seventy-eight convenience center. We noticed that we have had this contract for a period of time, and we've been doing a great job of of them. And so if there's anything, David, that we need to know any different?
Um, not so much, Vice Chairman Chairman Talbert. Just to explain how the agreement works, is that McCormick County pays fifty percent of the labor that it takes to run the site. So that is their contribution to our site such that they would be able to to utilize it for trash disposal. And as you said, this agreement's gone on for years. Roughly the same, the labor rate has gone up a little bit with with pay raises, but staff does recommend approval of this agreement.
Okay. And the council member have a concern or question? What do I hear regard of?
I make a motion that we approve this.
If that motion is second, that it be received and approved. Common question, I prepared the vote all by knowing by the reason you hang. Dean, your preference?
I vote yes.
The motion passed unanimously. Consideration of approval of entering into a HVAC contract with Cullum Service Interest to provide main- mentioning, maintaining on, maintaining and repair service on heating and air conditioning system on county buildings. Would you like to walk us through that, David?
Uh, yes, Cullum has had our contract for the last five years. The contract was up. They submitted the low bid when we rebid it by a substantial margin. Again, they're our most recent vendor. We have been satisfied with their work, so staff recommends approval of this contract.
Any comments, question from council? I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and receive this contract. It had been motion second, myself made the motion second by Tiffany Allen. All in favor of this motion, common question, prepare the vote, let me see the sign of your hand. Dean, your preference?
I vote yes.
Dean voted yes, and the motion passed unanimously, thanks. Consideration of approval entering the janitorial contract with Southern National Service. I I think we've been had a contract with this for a good period of time, so you want to tell us a little bit more about it, David?
That is is correct, Vice Chairman Talbert. Southern National Service is our current vendor. The contract we entered into with them allowed for five one-year extensions. I believe this will be the fourth one, but we are well satisfied with their service. And by mutually agreeing, us and Southern National, staff recommends that we renew this contract.
Council member have a question or concern?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Jackie.
This would be, I just want to understand, get it understand, this would be their fourth year. This would be their fourth year?
That is correct, there 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 are options to extend up to five years, and then we have to rebid it, just as we just did with Cullum.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I get a motion on?
Second.
Every motion by Jerry, second by Tiffany. All in favor, about knowing by raising your hand. Dean, your preference?
I vote yes.
The motion passed unanimously, voting yes on this contract. Consideration of approval, a six-month extension of the abandonment agreement between the county of Edgefield and Dubin Guru Group for developing of a Kingdom Mill Low Apartment. David, would you like to walk us through that one?
Uh, yes, this is a a a year-long contract that council entered into with the Dubin Guru Group, and it would expire June thirtieth. There was an option for a six-month extension. They are currently speaking with contractors, but for this agreement to go into place, they have to sign a contract with one. And this six-month extension gives them the time to do that. Again, according to the mayor and the town administrator, this project is moving forward quickly. So staff does vote, staff does recommend this extension.
Okay, what can I hear regards of this extension? Okay, question from council.
I just want to make a clarification specifically to what Mr. Piterguru spoke of earlier. The contract allows for one six-month extension, but they can come back to council and ask us for further extensions, should they need it, or should they choose, correct?
That is correct, they can come back and and ask for any of those things from council, but the actual contract that is expiring June thirtieth allowed for a six-month extension.
Gotcha.
Yes.
I just kind of wanted to clarify that, that they can come back if they need more time.
Well, they could they could come back and enter into a into a new contract. Yes.
See, that was going to be my next question.
It would not be an extension, it would be a new.
We'd have to redo a new contract, okay.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any more question? If not, what can I hear regards of this tension?
I motion to approve this.
I second it. It had been motion by Tiffany, second by Albert, that we go ahead and approve this extension. All in favor, by the reason you hang. Dean, what's your preference?
I vote yes.
Okay, the motion passed unanimously for the extension. Okay. Consideration of soliciting bid for a remote remount, remount ambulance at expense cost of approximately one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. David, would you?
Uh, yes, I've had several conversations with EMS Director Garrett Lynn concerning the difficulty in obtaining new ambulances, the long timeframes, the the exorbitant cost involved. As you know, we have one on order now, and it's still beyond a year before we'll ever receive it. So we have to stay on top of this issue, and that's why we're asking you to approve something that we won't even get for over a year and not in this budget to approve, but we need to to get going on it. We have a spare ambulance. We would like to do a remount. Essentially, they would take the bed off of the spare. They would refurbish the bed, they would put it on a new cabin chassis, and a budget number is around one hundred and ninety thousand, and a new ambulance is well over three hundred thousand. This particular unit, it would take probably fourteen, fifteen months to get. A new ambulance now would take over three years. So we believe this is a prudent investment, and we recommend proceeding with obtaining bids to do this. That's all.
Okay, I have a question, David. So you anticipate, we anticipate on having this in between the year of twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I would suggest if we started now, probably the latter part of twenty twenty-four for a remount, whereas if we ordered a new one, it may be twenty twenty-six. We we may need another ambulance before it ends, so we need to, to, I believe, move on this.
Do you expect to get the same amount of usage out of a remount? Will expect the time to last us about the same time, should we get get a new one?
In that the the cabin chassis will be brand-new, and the bed would be completely refurbished. I would expect there to be very little difference. I I would not claim an exact longevity, but I would expect there to be little difference. If you agree, Garrett? Garrett agrees.
And just for public information, Garrett, we still would have, this is just an extra ambulance being remounted, nothing will be taken out of service for the, okay. Just want to let the public know they're not short, being short-changed in ambulance during this procedure.
And just for the record's sake and those online, he said that was correct. I would like to add this, too. We're talking about a fourteen-month or so timeframe. This ambulance is in our possession for most of that time. It it will be a couple-month process once it's delivered to the vendor, but it's fully in use up to that time.
Can I have a motion on?
I'll second that.
It had been moved in second that we pass this remote ambulance amount. All in favor, by raising your hand. Dean, your preference?
I vote yes.
The motion passed unanimously, Dean voting yes. Thank you. Consideration of approval of transfer of fund from several old vehicle bonds and least precious fund to erase a negative balance in one vehicle bond bond fund and deposit the remaining balance in the EMS ambulance escrow account. We know that we have several of them, we was doing our our budget time of workshop, we had a lot of them, and David had made mention to to commit a balance. So David, you like to walk us through this one at this time?
I would, just just for public consumption, outside of the normal budgetary process, we have revenue accounts where sometimes monies are left over. Say in nineteen ninety-nine, we had a five-year vehicle bond fund, and we had six thousand dollars left in it, and yet we let another bond for vehicle purchases. That money just sits there, and month after month, it's on the report, it's on the sheet, it's not being utilized for the intended purpose because we're in another bond fund. That is what these funds are. They are funds that have been sitting there roughly unchanged for years. Our auditors recommend that from time to time, we clean up these old funds, and we transfer the money for a similar use. These were vehicle bond funds. We will transfer them to an EMS ambulance escrow to go towards something like we just discussed. And it just, number one, it it's great housekeeping budgetarily and for accounting purposes, and and number two, it actually puts those funds to their intended use.
Any question or comment from council? Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve this.
Tiffany make the motion, Jackie Keenan second it. To go ahead and approve it, all in favor, let me see, by the signs of your hand. Dean, your preference?
I vote yes.
Dean voted yes, that so the motion have been approved unanimously unanimously. Consideration of approval, transfer five thousand, four hundred forty dollars and sixty-eight cents from the old ten-dollar road maintenance account to the road maintenance ex- equipment escrow account. David, would you like to walk us through that one?
Vice Chairman, this is very similar to the previous line item on the agenda. These monies were left over from where we had a ten-dollar road maintenance fee. Council approved the purchase in this current year's budget of a right-of-way mower with a sidearm cutter to to cut back brush, and that came in a little over budget. This will help cover the overage from what was budgeted for that unit, and staff recommends approval of this, and again, it will clean up an account that has just set idle for many years.
Okay, myself, I'd like to make the motion to approve it, if I can get a second. Albert made the motion second by Jerry. All in favor of the motion, let me see, by the sign of your hand. Dean, what's your preference?
I vote yes.
The motion has passed unanimously with Dean voting yes. Considerate of approval of use of four thousand, one hundred thirty-five dollars from the animal control escrow account to purchase funds for a new animal control and animal care and control facility. David, you like to walk us through that one?
Yes, thank you. As we discussed earlier, there are certain revenue accounts that are sitting out there. I don't know the history of this account or why the animal control facility escrow was established. I know there was talk of building a facility years ago, but now we're actually building the facility. So the use of these funds, it, well, it's time to use them. And we have a need for furnishings, we have a need for veterinary equipment, and we're simply recommending that council allow us to expend these funds for that purpose.
I'll make a motion to that allows for spending of. Second. If I'm Albert made the motion, it was second by Dr. Keenan. All all in favor, let me notice by the sign of your hand. Dean?
I vote yes.
Okay, the motion passed unanimously with Dean voting yes. Considerate of approval to transfer twenty-eight thousand from unspent fund for the county council contingency account into the recreation facility escrow account. David?
Thank you. Council currently has a balance of twenty-eight thousand dollars in this current year's contingency account. Of course, that money must be expended by June thirtieth. As council has expressed in the strategic plan, that expanding county recreational opportunities are important to it. We recommend transferring this twenty-eight thousand. We recommend transferring this $28,000 into an escrow account such that it could be used to further those plans, and of course, the usage of the funds would still be by council vote. So you're simply taking the time limit off of the expenditure of the funds, but you could still use them for recreational purposes going forward.
Is there any question or concern from council members? What can I hear in regards of transferring these funds?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
It had motion and second, motion by Mr. Moody, second by Tiffany Ireland, that we pass this. All in favor, by saying, raising your hand. Dean, what's your preference?
I vote yes.
Motion passed unanimously, with Dean voting yes. Considerate of approval of solicited bid for the repairing and improvement of the approximately 100, approximately 15 square-foot building located at 320 Penn Street, formerly used by the Boy Scout. David, you like to give us a little information on it?
Yes, I would, thank you. The Boy Scout Hut is located on Penn Street, it is adjacent to the Hesey Griffiths Post. It's a concrete block construction rectangular building, very simple construction building. It has a bathroom, a kitchenette, and a storage closet on one end. But the open space of the building lends itself to multiple uses, whether it be rentals or recreation activities. The building as is, is in disrepair. It's relatively dry, but it's extremely dated. It would need wiring, it would need new sheet rock, it would need a new roof. And yet it is a county-owned facility that's well situated for recreation or rentals, and there is significant property around it for parking, for, you know, a playground, or a outdoor shelter, or something of that nature. Given that council has expressed an interest in recreation in the strategic plan, staff is simply recommending obtaining estimates to bring this building up to being able to be used for these type of purposes. For council's information, and then you could make a decision as to whether you want it to go forward. But the difficulty in estimating construction right now on a staff level, the way costs have gone, we feel it would be prudent to actually put it out for bid and get legitimate numbers rather than budget numbers, for your consideration. That's all.
Okay, any question or concern from council member?
I do have a question. Is there heat and air in that building?
There is a through-the-wall unit. I don't, it had air conditioning, and then there were wall-mounted heaters. I think they were electric.
So it has your classic window unit going through the wall for air conditioning, and then it has 220 amp heaters spaced all the way around the building for heat.
They would, they would have to be completely replaced. We would have to do a heat pump, or we would have to do a mini-split type unit. And we can, we can have this quoted with options.
Right.
You know, we can do the basics to make this a functional facility, and then we can have options to make it better. And those are things that council could entertain. There are various funding opportunities, grants to be applied for, there are still ARP funds. There are different ways to pay for it, but without the basic knowledge of what it's going to cost, we're not even at that starting point.
I like that we're looking at this because as you mentioned, in our strategic plan, we did put recreation specifically passive for the underserved demographic in our county, and I think this could very well be utilized for that, so I am excited that we are looking at this. Thank you.
Also, you're kind of looking at it like the Sweetwater Community Center, renting it out, and that nature?
That's correct. While it wouldn't have the historic character, it is a block building.
But it is some police closure.
May not do weddings.
Right.
You could do baby showers, you could do recreational classes, you could do adult recreation events, bingo-type things like that.
Any more question or comments? David, I know we talked about this early, and we made mention about the recreation, and just like Tiffany indicated, we noted that we really need some more activity for people in the county that can go. So if this can get off the ground, I think it'd be great for Edsfield citizens.
I'd love to see the dance classes come back there.
You gonna teach them?
Not, not myself, no.
I would agree, but you know, many of the things that were in existence just several years ago are not.
Right.
And the community is either growing, or it's not.
Right. And that, the Legion Hut served, serviced that for a long time, for the dance classes and whatnot, and if we have that, maybe we can get a teacher to come back in there. This will have heat and air where wasn't so much the case, it was kind of questionable at the Legion.
Okay, what can I hear in regards of this?
So moved.
It was motion by Moody, and second by Keenan, Dr. Keenan. All in favor of the motion, by, let me see, by raising of your hand. Dean, what is your preference?
I vote yes.
Dean voted yes, and that makes the motion passed unanimously. And we like to thank you. Okay, we're now down to comment from the public. I'll read to have anyone sign up. Okay, at this time, we have closed to comment from the public, and we go to a report from county council member. Anyone at this time have anything they'd like to bring forward at this time? Not all at one time?
I do.
Okay.
Mr. Hickson's here to help back me up on this. Last two or three weeks, I just want to bring this out to the public, anybody listening or watching, about the convenience centers being used by outside residents, Aiken County on the Sweetwater Inn. And David Cordell has been working in dock with Randy, doing spot checks down there, and now we're gathering facts to see how we want to proceed. I just want to let everybody know, we are in the process of trying to do something, right, wrong, or indifferent. So we're trying, and with the help of the sheriff, I'm sure, be involved with it. If we come up with the ordinance, deal them with fines. So, but we are doing something.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is not, record by the, proposed by the county administrator, Mr. Davis?
Yes, just a brief update on the LEC. The walls are actually going up as we speak, and that's great to see. There's been months of watching them dig footings and trudge through the mud, and now you actually see the shape of components of a building coming up. The contractor continues to catch up from previous rain delays. He's not there yet, but things are progressing well. This particular building, we are in the process of closing on. So when next we meet here, we will actually own this building. That's long overdue, I believe. The Barton Road property, we're closing on it later this week. We have the kickoff meeting for the grant tomorrow at Upper Savannah. So we'll start to see that project take off. Just remind the public, we received a $950,000 grant to deal with that flooding issue, and that's a big deal, it's a big project, so we're happy that that's progressing. The soccer field drainage project, Councilwoman Ireland will be happy about this. The last of the drains are being installed by county crews this week. There'll be a little bit of cleanup next week, and then it will be released to the town to do the top dressing of the field. They already have the sand, because we brought it to them, so it should happen quickly. I'm confident that soccer will be played in the fall on that field. It may not be 100%, but I believe it'll be 99, so.
We will make it work.
That, we will make it work, that's right.
David.
And I have to stop and mention, many times, I think many of you would recognize Mr. Hudson, who has come to these meetings in the past. Well, Mr. Hudson was in this line of work. He donated what would amount to probably $10,000-plus of drainage material that he had remaining from his past, doing this type of work, and is, you know, covered in straw and in the woods, and once you peel the plastic off, it was like new. And it's high-end drainage material, it's not regular French drain. I think most people who have been on the field after rain will say, wow, there's, it is not what it was. Now, it's clay soils, it's always going to be a little boggy, but there was no standing water, and it's working, so.
We're not going to be playing in mud puddles.
That's right, I have coached out there and done that. But just a big thank you to Mr. Hudson, and I think we should, at the end of this project, you know, honor him in some way, and that will be coming up. We have three new employees that have been in the assessor's office a couple of months now. April Morgan, our planner, continues to train them. She actually brought me a report. It is hard to explain the level of backlog, even from 2022, that they had in that office. It was, it was concerning, and it was just hard to fill those positions. Well, we did, and they have, in two months' time, eliminated 95% of the backlog. We're going to get ahead, there'll be no more falling behind on reassessments. So we're very proud of them, and we're proud of April for stepping up. This one is from Chairman Campbell. He asked me to mention this in lieu of his report. The first Tuesday of July is July 4th, so we're not having a council meeting that day. The next county council meeting will be July 11th, the second Tuesday of the month. The first Tuesday of August, two council members and I will be at the Association of Counties meeting, so we will have that meeting August 8th. And then I have to say, just a huge thank you again to Joe Simpson for working so hard to get this meal prepared, to honor Ms. Arlene. Joe, Ms. Arlene has a special place in his heart, and he wanted to do this. He was not asked to do this, he volunteered to do this, and we certainly appreciate the relationship that employees develop here, and look out for one another. That's all I have.
Okay. County administrator, we like to thank you for the update. It's great inspiring to hear what was going on, and we thank you for your hard work. You really works hard, and I know the council member here definitely appreciate it. That's less work for us have to do when you kind of stay on top of everything. Okay, next, a comment by the county council chairman. Chairman Talbert, Chairman Calma, you like to say anything at this time?
I just want to say I'm on business travel this week that I couldn't avoid, so thank you to Vice Chair Talbert for running this meeting for me, thank you.
Okay. Is there's anything else claiming my attention at this time? Is not, can I get a motion adjourned? A motion by Tiffany, second by Dr. Keenan, that we adjourn, so we adjourn at this time. Oh, okay, okay. I'm about ready to, okay, all in favor of the motion, let me see by the sign of your hand. Chairman Calma?
I vote yes.
You voted yes, all right.
Okay, Dean, we'll talk to you later, okay? Bye. Okay, I'm going to hang up now, okay? All right, bye.